Well, I think we can call this meeting of the city council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Pretemperie Propesku.
Here.
And Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, we'll begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I will do the honors. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for your guidance of our great community and our citizens in their lives and in their civic responsibilities. We ask that you help us to fulfill our obligations as the leaders of this community to the best of our ability. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. We're at the point where people who have something to say that's not on the agenda have a chance to come forward. Go ahead. Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's Bob Stewart, 11695 Largo Court, Loa Melinda. It's regarding an item that is on the agenda but it's not a public hearing, and so just very compelled to listen in this evening and perhaps have some input at that time if that would be your honor.
That would be great. We always welcome comment as items come up.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, we have scheduled item number one, joint meeting of the city council and agency board pertaining to multiple items. My first question is, are we allowed to even call the board to orders, or is that something we can do because it doesn't cost anything?
You can and you must.
Okay. Then...
We'll call the RDA to order. Thank you.
Item 1A is approval and ratification of an appeal filed on behalf of the city pursuant to ABX 127. And this is an item because we believe they've miscalculated our ability to pay the ransom fee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes. They've miscalculated, and of course, they calculated too high, I'm sure.
That is correct.
You're listed as being our discussant on item one. When we get to A, they don't include you, so...
Okay, I'll try to be brief.
You're invited to lead us through this.
In terms of the appeal, there was a deadline to file an appeal which the city filed through staff. This is to approve and ratify the filing of the appeal. That's the first item.
Mark, before you go on, just in case some folks may not know who you are, you should just kind of show up. We all know who you are. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows. This is Mark Hipsch, and he is our RDA attorney.
Special counsel.
That means not general. That would be your city attorney.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Do you want me to go through the others, or...
If I could just make a comment before you begin. I spent some time with the documents that you submitted to us, and I guess after reviewing them multiple times, I feel compelled to share with the public, both in the room and perhaps those that are watching on television. This is a very complex and fluid issue that we're dealing with. Correct? Is that a fair characterization?
That is definitely correct.
And so if you get lost in the discussion, it requires a great deal of study to understand for the moment, recognizing that there's uncertainty on multiple levels of this issue.
I agree.
So I just wanted to set a little bit of context so that people don't get confused.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Item 1A has been described. Item 1B is first reading and set for second reading, an ordinance where the city would elect to participate under the so-called voluntary program under AB 27. The effect of adopting an ordinance at this time is not crystal clear, one of the uncertainties being that the Supreme Court has stayed the applicability of AB 27 in its entirety. We nevertheless think it is advisable to go forward if it's the council's ultimate intention to elect to participate, assuming that the Supreme Court holds valid AB 26 and 27. That is not a given at all. There is an active lawsuit by several plaintiffs challenging the constitutionality of those measures, but this would be to enact an ordinance. Item C is to approve an enforceable obligation payment schedule. The city council action is approving by minute order. As far as the agency, we eventually prepared a resolution which is in the materials, so when the motion is on behalf of the agency to approve the schedule, it will be the corresponding resolution. An enforceable obligation payment schedule briefly is a new animal that's created by AB 26. That requires that redevelopment agencies adopt a schedule and post it on a website and transmit it to the auditor controller and the Department of Finance by 60 days from the adoption of AB 26, which turns out to be August 28th, which the Department of Finance says, because that falls on a weekend, they will treat as August 29th. That appeared on the state's website for the first time at the close of business today. Item D is approving an agreement to transfer tax increment between the agency and the city, and item E is a city council resolution approving the same agreement. The approval under these resolutions is made expressly conditional on the Supreme Court determining the validity of AB 27 and releasing its stay. The position is somewhat aggressive to move ahead with this, but again, by its terms, it can't go into effect actually until the stay is lifted. It also, what this relates to is, in the event the city makes a so-called voluntary payment to the state to keep redevelopment alive in Loa Melinda, the law allows the agency to make a backfill payment to the city. And what this agreement does, it provides for such a payment to be made by the agency to the city. Because the city's payment, first payment, is not due till January 15, 2012, and because the Supreme Court has indicated, when it granted jurisdiction in this lawsuit, that it expected to decide the case before January 15, 2012, any uncertainties associated with the agreement and whether it exists, whether it's effective, whether it can be implemented should be resolved by early 2012. Probably not earlier than that, though, so we're going to continue to operate in this zone of tremendous uncertainty until the Supreme Court decides the case. Any questions?
Are they deciding 26 and 27?
The legality and constitutionality of both measures are before them, and I believe they will decide both. With the Supreme Court, it's conceivable that they could, you know, hypothetically, they might decide that 26 is unconstitutional and therefore see no need to reach 27, but they'll probably address both.
Part of the reason I was asking that is because the ordinance as drafted in its last item, it's page 10 of the ordinance, item 11, it says it's conditional upon determination that ABX 127 are valid, and it doesn't list 126. I don't know whether that was just a...
Typo.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was...
It should be both.
Okay.
Can you add any clarity to what impact does the recent stay actually have on our ability to conduct business as an RDA?
Most activities of redevelopment agencies are frozen. The agency cannot initiate new programs. It can't carry out existing programs unless there are existing enforceable obligations. The agency can, and it is required to, implement enforceable obligations, which includes existing agreements. So if, for example, an agency had a contract with a developer, and the developer were going to build 100 apartment units, and the agency had said, "We'll pay you $1 million at completion if they're restricted for low-income households," if we were midstream on that agreement, the agency would be obligated to make payment under that agreement, but not new agreements.
To follow up on that, if there had not been a stay granted by the Supreme Court, then upon our adoption, the first reading, second reading, and then 30 days later, the official status of our council bill, we would be able to conduct business. Does the stay make that not operative?
The stay makes that not operative, yes.
So the stay is actually temporarily worse than nothing?
Temporarily, for the most part, yes, although one of the provisions stayed is the provision that agencies are dissolved October 1, 2011.
Now, I know prior to this whole thing actually passing, we transferred some land into the city's jurisdiction. That doesn't affect our ability to then work as a city in regards to that land, does it?
It does. There, one of the provisions of Part 1.8 of AB 26 that is exempt, let me step back. The Supreme Court stayed the applicability of all of AB 27 and most of AB 26 other than Part 1.8 of AB 26. Within AB 26, 1.8 basically says, "The activities of agencies are frozen. Agencies must submit an enforceable obligation payment schedule within 60 days of the adoption of the bill," and also left unstayed under the court's order, which was a stay with an exception. Within the exception is a provision that says, "The controller on October 1 is authorized to search for any transfers of property from redevelopment agencies to public agencies that occurred on or after January 1, 2011, and to reverse those conveyances." So that's impactful of what the city could do.
Authorized but not mandated?
I'm sorry?
Authorized but not mandated to search out? Because I would think they wouldn't waste their time if the case is pending before the Supreme Court.
I wouldn't presume to guess what the controller would do, given behavior earlier in the year.
But if they don't proceed without authorization and choose not to exercise it, then what would we be left with? Would we still have the right to conduct business in the city?
The problem with conducting business as a city is there's a possibility you wouldn't be able to convey the property to a bona fide purchaser for value because a potential purchaser is on notice of this clawback right that the state has.
But could we, until such date as it is clawed back, negotiate?
The agency may talk, the city may talk. That's different than conveying property, disposing of property, encumbering property, making payments in respect to property.
Okay.
So discussions can take place, but any conveyances, encumbrances are very problematic.
If I can follow that to a little different level. I was visiting with the city clerk yesterday about some of the RDA properties that we have, and evidently we have vacancies. What do we mean by freeze? Can we no longer rent properties that are available or maintain them?
There are, the problems with the agency-owned properties are as follows in the face of the stay. First, the agency can't dispose of property, so that would be both a sale and a lease. The further problem with renting property is the properties in question are subject to recorded covenants that require that they use before affordable housing and require that it be used for owner-occupied housing. We have probably another four dozen properties or so that have similar covenants. If we engage in a practice that is, we're holding up as something prohibited by others, we might jeopardize not just that section but potentially other parts of the covenants. It is extremely frustrating to have an inventory of houses, some of which are in, you know, very good shape, some of which have been fixed up, and be unable to dispose of them to intended occupants, and really not for a profit, but to operate them as affordable housing. But the broad, rather ham-fisted manner in which AB 26 operates squashes the ability to dispose of those properties.
And the best prognostication we can make is that that freeze, as you've described it, will be in place until the Supreme Court takes action on AB 26 and 27?
Yes. There has been a request, which is really second request, that the Supreme Court clarify its stay. I think it's rather wishful thinking to think they're going to revisit the merits of the case in any significant way. Again, they've already issued a partial stay. They'd had some errors that they corrected, but I doubt that they'll revisit it before their final decision. Already, for the court to have said, "We will accept original jurisdiction at the Supreme Court," is unusual, and then for them to have established a very expedited briefing schedule, including a statement they expect to decide the case before January 15, which is the date the first remittance payments are due, it's not an accident. I think that's as much as one would expect out of the Supreme Court from a timing standpoint.
Do you believe that the processing of our appeal of the amount will go forward during the stay, or will the state just go, "Well, you can't have the good and the bad. We're just going to give you all the bad"?
The law provides that the Department of Finance will process appeals. I can tell you that the way the statute's written, there seem to be two very narrow grounds for appeals, and the decision-making is by the Department of Finance, and the level of discretion that the statutes appears to accord, the director of the Department of Finance seems very broad. That said, I think one could envision a situation where the conduct of the director of the Department of Finance is, does not align at all with the articulated bases of appeal under the statute, and if that is brought to a court's attention, a court may say, "No, you're going to have to grant this appeal."
If I can summarize what we're doing tonight, it's putting the city and the RDA in the best possible position to move forward with whatever the outcome from the Supreme Court decision.
That's correct. That's correct. And in respect to the enforceable obligation schedule, it's doing something that the law requires that the agency do at this time.
Can you clarify for us what the Department of Finance stated we owe them versus what we determined we owe them? Because I'm having a hard time seeing that in here.
It's $230,000. Diana?
Can you repeat that for me?
Can you clarify to us the differences between what they think we owe them versus what we determine we owe them?
We took into consideration also the SS valuation and... And if it was related with the consultant, we calculated those numbers kind of more in line with what we believe to be our SS valuations.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing the difference.
It's about 200-some thousand.
30,000, okay. There it is. I see it. Okay. Every penny counts. Thanks.
Part of the reason that amount isn't greater is, in the appeals, the state has two. There's a gross comparison and a net comparison, and no matter how far off the state is on the net comparison, having both factors and averaging the two tends to reduce the amount of appeals.
Should be noted that we're going through the similar thing at the airport. In fact, we have a special IVDA meeting next Thursday, and what the state determined our IVDA owes versus what we think we owe, was a difference of $6 million, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, they were able to agree with us after they appealed it, but I'm not 100% sure on that. But that just gives you an idea of how off they can be, so...
Right.
Just a follow-up question on this obligation payment. So we turn in what we think should be the correct figure, and I assume the state agency then makes a ruling that they either agree or disagree, and can you enlighten us anymore what happens after we...
There's one interceding step there, and it gets more complicated. You have the enforceable obligation payment schedule. That's what the agency adopts. A month later, the city is supposed to adopt a recognized obligation payment schedule. So far, no one in the business can identify any reason for the second, the ROPS, to be different than the EOPS. So most likely, any reason the city, we're having the city approve the enforceable obligation payment schedule, is a month from now, we may say, "That is our recognized obligation payment schedule." If it turns out we find some errors in it, we could bring it back to the city council, but that will probably, that will take those first two steps, and we don't really understand what the reason is for the second step in that. That then is sent to the Department of Finance, sent to the county auditor controller, and the state does take a look at that. They're not bound by the local agency, says the redevelopment agency is obliged to designate someone who will be available to answer questions that the state may come up with. And we have no idea really how far-ranging the state's questions could be, but at least if you, if things are listed on there and the agency has regarded them as enforceable obligations, we may be preserving their status as enforceable obligations. If they're not listed on there, we're in a worse position.
Just to make sure I'm clear, so we're approving this enforceable obligation payment schedule even though we have an issue with the amount that the state is giving us?
Yes. One, the first item is an appeal of what your remittance payment would be. The second is an enforceable obligation schedule, and while we're at it, that doesn't really have any vitality unless and until the agency is dissolved. If the agency is dissolved, only those obligations which are enforceable obligations can be paid. While the agency is not dissolved, including by October 1, 2011, the agency will file a statement of indebtedness, which is in the original redevelopment law and hasn't been repealed. That will enable the agency to receive tax increment this year in order to pay obligations such as debt service, scheduled debt service payments on the 2008 tax allocation bonds.
Any other questions? If not, then I think we can start with consideration of item A, then I'll open the public hearing for B.
I move that we approve item A, which is approve and ratify an appeal filed on behalf of the city pursuant to ABX 1, ABX 27.
Is there support for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Now we'll move to the public hearing for item B, Council Bill O-2011-9. It's the first reading and setting the second reading for September 13, allowing redevelopment agency to continue if the city participates in ABX 127. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? No takers. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. People are more interested in item 16, I think. Okay, we can consider this, I guess, a motion to make this the first reading instead of the second reading.
I'll move that action as stated by the mayor.
And would that include the correction to the typo that omitted AB 26 on the page 10?
Anything the city attorney says needs to be in there is included in my motion.
I'll go ahead and second that. Okay. Did anybody have any items to add to the 64 functions of our city, RDA? I thought that was a rather extensive list. I don't know who compiled it, but it's impressive.
This may be an ordinance that hopefully doesn't come to pass.
Yeah. Well, it'll come to pass, but it may not come to fruition. Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. We'll move to item C, an enforceable obligation payment schedule. The recommending approval of that.
I'll move the item.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, we move to CRA Bill R-2011-10, approving an agreement to transfer tax increment between the city and the agency. And this is your item. No, wait, CRA council resolution. So it's my item?
Either way, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a motion or any question? Do you have any comments?
A question on item C. Was the motion on behalf of both the city and the agency actions?
You know, let's clarify, yes, we're, all these actions are on behalf of the RDA and the city, although that wasn't specified when the motion was made. So let's go ahead and clarify that.
If you prefer that we take another vote, we can do that.
In regards to C, one of us has to make the motion since you're both chair, correct?
Do you want us to re...
Why don't you make a second motion?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll move the redevelopment agency portion of C.
And that includes the resolution that was distributed?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and second that, item number C, as it references the redevelopment agency.
Okay, and I'll move it on behalf of the redevelopment agency? Pardon? I'm sorry.
I think Mayor Rixby already did that.
I move for the redevelopment agency. You can second it because you're the chair.
That's fine.
You can probably second, but whatever. I think we've got enough motions.
Okay, I'll make the second for the redevelopment agency. And then I'll make the motion for the city.
So Mayor Rixby made the motion, Mr. Duper seconded. Do I hear a vote on that? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, RDA bill passes.
Okay. We already voted for the city before. We're counting that as the redevelopment agency. Okay. Back to item D. I guess we're ready for a motion on that.
I'll move CRA Bill Number R-2011-10. Second.
And this requires both redevelopment and that is included in the motion, right?
That's included in the motion. Thank you for that clarification. It's included in the second.
Okay. Then is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition?
Actually, should be noted, this is just the agency board action, not both. It just happens between the agency and the city.
Well, I think it has to be both. It has to be both according to special counsel.
Why don't you continue to have separate motions on each to follow the same patterns?
Okay, then I will lead the council vote. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, then it's approved from the council perspective.
And then from the agencies, do I hear a motion to pass your bill?
I move it.
Mayor Rixby second. So we have a motion from Mayor Rixby and a second from Mr. Duper. Do I hear any opposition? Hearing none, it so passes as an agency action.
Okay, we'll go to item E, Council Bill R-2011-35, approving an agreement to transfer tax increment between the agency and the city. This is the city portion. There's a motion?
I'll second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved.
We'll go ahead and move it from the agency's perspective. Do I see a motion for...
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Seeing the opposition, it is so moved.
All of that is done. I think that releases our special counsel. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, consent calendar. Any items that anyone wants to pull, or is there a motion for plenary approval of the consent calendar? the consent calendar?
I will move the consent calendar with a brief question, but I'll hold the question until there's a second.
I will second the consent calendar.
Go ahead.
The, the question that I have as part of the discussion is, we talk about, let's see, which one is it is? Installation of water line improvements on Park Cottage, Lilik and Coloma Streets. Is that part of a ongoing strategic plan for replacing old water pipes?
Yes, sir.
So there's a, there's a strategic plan that we're following and doing this?
Yes, sir.
And not waiting until we have leaks and problems?
Well, we did, we did have a leak on Park Avenue earlier this year, and so it's time for us to replace it, so.
And, and how significant a plan is that? Meaning that how, what period of time are you anticipating before we feel we've got all the water lines up to the standard that we would want them?
Usually I go by, by leaks. If you have a lot of water leaks, we will go and replace it. Because a lot of times, I don't know how long that pipe's in the ground. It was some of, especially this area, it was before the city was incorporated.
Okay.
So.
So there's no plan to dig up the entire city?
Pardon me?
There's no plan to dig up the entire city until leaks occur?
No, we, we have been doing it for, for the past 10 years. So we, our pipelines are in good shape.
And some of them are done by internal?
Yes.
Balloon angioplasties?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is that, is that the extent of your concern?
It was.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to approve the entire consent calendar. I was intrigued by the easement for the brine line. How much salt do they drain through that?
I don't know.
A lot.
But, but yes, but we have a special pipeline and a treatment plant right now that existing pipeline in, at the city San Bernardino sewer treatment plant. So this is for Ucaiba Water District to take the water from their treatment plant to this, the end of this pipeline. They eventually go to, I think it's City of Corona, where Sapa, which is Santa Ana Water Project Authority have a water treatment plant to treat the brine, treat the salt.
My understanding, I looked at the website for that Santa Ana water basin, and apparently there's 1.2 million tons of salt.
Yes.
That go into the Bunker Hill Basin catchment area every year or something like that. It's just a huge amount of salt. And you think your water is, just comes out of the tap without much work put into it. There's an awful lot that goes into it. Removing salt, removing all kinds of impurities. But we'll get back to the consent calendar, a motion in a second. Is there any opposition to approval? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. We move to item number 15, Council Bill R-2011-34, adopting the hazard mitigation plan. And the fire department has a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you, again, is the adoption of the council bill and this hazard mitigation plan. If you remember, this came to the council in November. Since that time, where it came to the council and was open for public comment, it's been going through a process of submission to the county, CALEMA, then ultimately the federal FEMA. I've actually asked our emergency services coordinator, Deborah Kreske, to just give you a brief update on the process that we've been through since November and where we're, where we're headed from here with the, with this plan.
All right, just to refresh your memory, back in November, we brought this plan to you to review for public comment. And so just to bring your, bring it back to the surface again, the hazard mitigation plan is developed to identify the hazards in the city and the mitigation actions to reduce these hazards. The plan is a requirement of the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, and it's also required to be updated every five years. The current plan is a 2010 plan, so, or 2005. So in 2010, we started updating this plan. And in January of 2011, we submitted the plan to CALEMA, California Emergency Management Agency, and FEMA. Both of those agencies reviewed the plan and gave us back comments in June of 2011. And there was only one change that we needed to do. We made that change, and we are bringing it here now to be adopted. The plan must be adopted to be able to be associated with some funding also. But, and, so tonight, hopefully we'll adopt the plan. Once it's adopted, it will be submitted to FEMA. And once FEMA adopts that, or approves that plan, then we will have five years from that date to update that plan. The funding requirements that are associated with this plan, we need this plan to get these, to be able to apply for these programs. The hazard mitigation grant program, the pre-disaster mitigation program, as well as any declared disasters and mitigation projects associated with these disasters. To date, we have been able to use that hazard mitigation plan, even though it's not approved yet. But just being in the works, that we were able to use it to help get reimbursement for the January 2010 floods, which we were able to get over $16,000 for that. And December 2010 floods, as you all remember, we, the reimbursement for that disaster will be over $1.6 million. And also, recently, we put in a NOI, a notice of interest, for a pre-disaster mitigation grant. And NOI was approved. We can move forward in applying for this grant, and we are applying for $3 million to improve the Zanki or Zanha channel for improvement. Also, it has supported the Emergency Management Performance Grant, which we're getting over $10,000 in that one.
Just a quick question.
And so, yes.
Sorry. Regarding the ZANA improvement plan, can you tell us a bit more about that, Jar?
Yes, and this is to extend the box covert at railroads in California at the Mission Zanki.
So that would be a larger portion of the cost associated to doing that?
Street improvement.
Okay.
Yes.
And that, that grant, the PDM, is a competitive grant. And so, and, and it's due pretty soon, but we can apply for that. It is a grant. It's a, it's a nationwide grant, and there's only, I believe, 130 jurisdictions that have applied for that at this point and been approved, and we're one of those. For, to move forward. We weren't approved for the funding.
Are we working with anybody in DC to try to move that forward, or is it just pretty much putting in the application and helping for the best?
No, not, not right now in Washington DC. We've been just working with, we submit the NOI, and now we have to submit the full package, cost estimate and all the, the full package. We haven't had to do that yet.
We'll advise you when the, when the submittal is in.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, then the appropriate motion is to approve Council Bill R-2011-34.
I make that motion to approve Council Bill R-2011-34, adopting the hazard mitigation plan.
I'll second it with just a comment. I'm assuming that you folks are looking at it carefully and you understand it. There's a lot of information here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One last comment also. I know they've been working very, very hard on this for the last year or so. Congratulations.
If I could make a request, next time we have a major submittal like this, if, if we could have kind of a highlights, in other words, if this is an updated plan where there's new information, if we could identify the highlights that we could review, changes, the, the highlight the changes that have been made in the plan that are significant. Not having read a previous plan, you know, it's hard for me to distinguish what may have changed. It all looks good to me. I don't understand part of it, but that's okay too, I guess. But I think just some highlights would be useful.
Your comment perhaps is on the entire plan versus the five-year ago plan, or the minor change that we made for FEMA's request, or both?
Well, probably where there's change, it would be nice to at least have that delineated briefly.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, what was the FEMA request? You said it was one thing? Was it something trivial?
Very trivial, yes. It was, it was just expanding on.
So it's, it's like, it's like a building, engineering firm making one little trivial change to your plans, just to make sure that you, you knew they were there?
It was actually extra language that they just needed us to expand on. Sorry, I can't remember anything like that. It's been a little while.
Okay.
Comment probably is very on the point, though. If this is an update, what was the update of the five-year ago plan?
That's my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve that. Is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We move to the exciting topic of the night. Item 16, discussion in direction to staff regarding prohibition of drive-through businesses throughout the city. Councilman Brower.
Not sure how exciting it will be, but there's at least some limited interest. So since I asked to put this on the agenda, I will lead with a few comments. I guess the first one is why talk about something like this now? I think there's always a chain of events that potentially bring items to individuals' attention. We're all very aware of First Lady Obama's champion fight against obesity and better eating for children. So that's certainly been out there the last couple of years. About a year ago, City of Baldwin Park here in Southern California, which happens to be the home of In-N-Out Burger, I will admit that about once a year, if I get a hankering for a hamburger, it's the only place I will choose to go to. But nonetheless, the home of one of the most successful fast food restaurant chains passed an ordinance to ban any new development of fast food drive-through facilities. And their chief reason was overabundance of the facilities and the threat to health and obesity that this was fostering. Also been out there for a long time, though not quite as much in recent focus, but there has been efforts to repeal a City of San Luis Obispo's ordinance they've had in place for 30 years now, a prohibition on drive-through facilities, and have championed the idea probably more than anyone else in California. Hasn't been a lot of development in Loma Linda recently, but been some talk of various kinds of developments. I think that's the reason and impetus, that I think it's timely that at least we as a community have a discussion and so forth. Reading the tea leaves, I already have a feeling what direction I'm going to get as far as support, but that's perfectly fine. I think even more appropriate is just at least having the discussion. There's no staff report on this item, so I've tried to go through and at least summarize what I think in my mind are arguments for and against. Obviously, we all have our biases, and mine are probably biased. I will fully admit, but at least go through a few of the pros and cons. Arguments in favor of a ban on drive-through facilities that would have impact, obviously, on fast food facilities more than any other is just the idea of a vision, what we see our town as having a vision to become or to preserve. I think Loma Linda is a unique community. We're all aware of the Blue Zone. Author who has pointed out to, City of Loma Linda being the only city in the US that makes his Blue Zone list. I heard his comments when he first visited Loma Linda and his great disappointment when he saw the fast food facilities upon exiting the freeway and driving into Loma Linda. We talked about the visions that other cities such as San Luis Obispo and Baldwin Park have and their reasons. Other arguments in favor of further building of drive-through restaurant-type facilities does seem like litter and trash do tend to be more common at those facilities than sit-down restaurants. Also, from a planning standpoint, pedestrian-friendly environment is a goal we've had for a long time, and sit-down restaurants certainly are more conducive to that. Issues related to pollution and so forth, related to emissions and so forth. That's one of those kind of, kind of tricky how you read the arguments. I think the best arguments on that came out of some recent debates in Canada, where their capital city, Ottawa, is discussing a similar ban. And some point out that, you know, state there's more pollution and so forth. When you park a car and then restart it, they went through and did analysis that I thought was interesting, said that's true only if you haven't driven the car for more than about five minutes. Once the catalytic converter gets up to operating temperature, once you start a car up any time in the next 30 minutes, there will be no difference in pollution related to a steady state. And they also use the figure every five minutes of idling uses the equivalent of gasoline of, that would take the average car four kilometers. Being in Canada, obviously use kilometers, but, you know, roughly a couple of miles. So those are some of the arguments, I think, in favor of the ban. The arguments against, I think a lot of us are concerned, rightfully so, about there's just too much regulation and overzoning of everything. You know, what are we going to try and control next? And, you know, why don't we get out of the way and let developers build what they think businesses want and what they think will be successful? And it's not appropriate for us to, you know, try and zone for all these different entities. Another argument against is people do utilize fast food restaurants. If we don't build any additional ones, people will go to neighboring cities, get their fast food fixes and so forth there, and this will cause more pollution for people to drive to those neighboring facilities and the loss of business that that will entail. Another argument that, that San Luis Obispo is actually given credence to, and it is, I think, very true. It is inconvenient for those that are, have limited mobility, or those with, you know, for instance, kids in the car. It's tough to get in and out of an automobile. With those situations, much more convenient and, and efficient to be able to use a drive-through. So there definitely are issues related to some of the mobility needs of individuals. Also been pointed out, if you don't have drive-through facilities, you're probably going to need more parking, and that's going to entail, you know, more use of real estate, et cetera, and potentially more costly development. We touched on already the discouraging business and tax receipts, and I'm sure we will hear some more comments related to that, and rightfully so. And then a final argument that I've heard and is true, I think, drive-throughs tend to be safer at night. And some of the folks in our work, 24-hour shifts at the hospital, will go out at one or two in the morning to the, to the Del Taco that's open 24 hours a day with just the drive-through and feel that it is safer to have just drive-throughs. So I think there are some definite pros and cons that are legitimate on both sides of the equation. But I think it, at least for me, boils down to just what we think is But I think it, at least for me, boils down to just what we think is our vision for the city. I've yet to hear anyone come to me and say, "What the city needs is, is more drive-through, fast food restaurants." That's, that's really our crying need. On the other hand, I recognize there's not overwhelming support for this. And like I say, I've already, I think, read the tea leaves. I'm not sure I'm going to get any support here with the council. And I don't pretend to think any issue that doesn't have a consensus in the community is going to be successful. There has to be agreement with general direction. So, anyway, just throwing this out for discussion based on why I think it's a timely issue and why it's at least worth talking about. And those are my thoughts on the matter.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if you'd had a chance to look into the City of Claremont? Because I believe they have a similar situation. I don't know if it's necessarily a ban, but I don't believe they have any fast food anywhere in the city. I'm not sure how they accomplish that. But I was curious whether or not it's just being more, more of a closer-to-home type of situation.
I'm not intimately familiar with Claremont, but obviously enjoy visiting there and have one of my colleagues that lives in Claremont. And I do think the only thing that I would say is certain cities like Claremont have tried to be unique with everything from, you know, fostering pedestrian environment, fostering tree-lined streets, fostering university-town feeling. And I think they have been successful in distinguishing themselves from some of the other communities. But I don't have specifics on this issue related to that.
Couple of quick questions. Are you referring to all drive-throughs or only those related to fast food?
Well, I will have to turn to the city attorney and ask for some words of wisdom. As I understand it, obviously, there has to be some general language related to such businesses. Exactly if we chose to move forward, what those specific categories would be, I would have to refer to our attorney, and that is part of the, part of the questions, yes.
And as he contemplates that, I have a second question. Were you ready to go ahead and answer that, or?
I was just flipping through an article that I have. Cities have adopted a lot of different formulas for addressing these types of issues and different categories of fast food-type restaurants or drive-through restaurants. And in various combinations, you can address different issues that arise with, you know, that type of chain restaurant in particular. So it is something that's within the general police power of the city to regulate based upon the effect on the public health, safety, and welfare. In studying those issues, staff would want to obtain as much information as possible and put that into the record so that the record would support the necessary findings to show that the public health, safety, and welfare would be promoted by the particular ordinance that you choose to adopt if you do adopt such regulations.
Okay.
But there's a fair amount of flexibility in cities across the country. I was looking, everything from Massachusetts to California, there have been some differing types of ordinances. So if it's the direction to staff to study this further, we could certainly do that and present some options or alternatives. Our current statute, I did bring our zoning book in with, to council chambers with me, but we do permit those in certain areas of the city and other areas by conditional use permit. So there is some flexibility in our current zoning regulations.
Current zoning allows drive-throughs in commercial-zoned areas with a conditional use permit. So those type of facilities have to go through the planning commission and council approval.
Any other question I had? You mentioned the City of Baldwin Park. How long ago was that particular ban passed? And what were the ramifications after it passed? Was there legal issues afterwards? Did it withstand any legal challenges?
It was sometime last year. What all has transpired since then, I don't have any great knowledge. What legal challenges, I would have to defer to staff or city attorney to comment on that.
Baldwin Park's ordinance was originally passed in two thousand and six and revised in November of two thousand and eight.
Yeah, actually, in May of two thousand and ten, they adopted a moratorium on any additional drive-through restaurants. And that, as far as I could tell, that was the last action they had taken, which was to put a hold on any further developments while they studied that. Similar to what we did with the marijuana dispensary ordinance, you can put a stay up to two years on any approvals while you study and prepare additional ordinances.
I'd be curious to know if Baldwin Park already had existing businesses that had drive-throughs already? We don't know?
I don't know to the extent.
I think at least one reference stated there were over a dozen drive-through fast food facilities. So definitely, that was one of the issues.
I have a question, Councilman Brower. Did you come, in your research, did you come across any studies of the, either the economic impact or the, I guess, I'd like to believe that if there was a restriction on the lower-end fa- fast food, drive-through restaurants, that that would make a community more attractive to some other more, what I'll describe as higher-end restaurants? Is there, have there been any studies done of these ordinances where they've been implemented? And the, the impact?
I have not seen any specific studies related to that. Obviously, cities such as San Luis Obispo that have trumpeted this point to fostering some of the sit-down restaurants and some of the existing businesses that they have in their downtown. But as far as any specific studies on that, I didn't find anything that they were able to point out or others. So I think it is a difficult question to get any accurate figures. Short-term, you know, obviously, it's easy to point to negative impacts of someone saying they'll take their drive-through business elsewhere. But as far as how you analyze the long-term benefits with cities like San Luis Obispo or, as was mentioned, places like Montclair that have tried to, or, excuse me, Claremont that have tried to foster, you know, the pedestrian-friendly environment, I'm not aware of any good studies.
I just thought that perhaps if the cities didn't do it, perhaps developers would be interested in knowing, is it easier to attract some of these other more attractive restaurants? But it sounds like the City of San Luis Obispo, if they don't have data, they're at least asserting that it has helped secure business for the other restaurants in town.
They make that argument, but again, I don't pretend to be an expert on this issue. Didn't, you know, spend multiple days of researching that some. And my only intent tonight, just to have a general discussion. If we choose to move forward and let planning commission take a look, fine. If we don't, move on and so be it. But, so I don't, don't pretend to be an expert.
I think this would be a good time to call forward our public comments. Dick Wiley has a request in.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to respectfully discuss with you maybe some issues to either think about or come up with answers on. One example would be for handicapped. People break a leg, they're not going to want to walk into a place with crutches. You've got the elderly. Some of them have a hard time getting around with their walkers. Drive-throughs are better for them. That aspect of things, yes, I see what you're trying to say. I think also, if we do this, we're cutting taxes out of this town. Business will say, "If we don't have a drive-through, we're not going to come to this town." Maybe, I mean, I don't know, it'd be interesting to take a poll of your current restaurants and say, "What percentage is drive-through? What percentage is walk-in? What your tax gain or loss going to be from something like that?" I was a little put off when I was watching Oprah when the guy from the Blue Zone was on. The comment that he made, he must have been blind when he went through this town. He said, basically, and I think it's pretty close to exactly what he said. "Oh, they're all vegetarians in Loma Linda. If we do, then how come we've got so many people going through drive-throughs eating meat?" He may have come in and gone to a place that was vegetarian and saw that portion of it, but he didn't get around this town. He said, "There were Adventists in this town." There are Adventists, but it's about a fifty, fifty-one percent, one side or the other. Now, as I say, I disagree with his assumption of this town. Yes, we want a healthy town. I can agree with that. But I think a lot of this needs to go back to looking at, oh, we're going to lose business. We haven't attracted a lot of a business to this town on an ongoing basis. We've got land that's sitting there people don't want to come to. And I think this is something that seriously needs to be looked at because this is down the road. What businesses in town, now you were talking possibly a ban on all drive-throughs, I personally prefer to go through a drive-through bank. If I want to take money out, I don't want the teller to sit there and go, and somebody standing in the line waiting going, "Oh, that guy's got money coming out." Wait till I get out the door. I'm an easy target. If you go through the drive-through, nobody but you and the teller knows what's going out that window. Now, it depends where you're taking small amounts, especially if you take, start taking larger amounts in hundred-dollar bills. So this is a safety issue for that. When you talk about more parking lots, space, is that going to increase your global warming? This creates a lot of additional heat that you don't normally bank on. Again, you brought up about the twenty-four-hour drive-throughs. Most of those close their doors because they don't want walk-in robberies at night. Where are you going to have twenty-four-hour open doors? Now, what kind of a problem are we going to have there with security? Because if nobody's around and you're open, which are very few, you can be a prime target the longer the time goes on into the evening or night. Also, when you look at signals around here and driving and talk about pollution, sometimes you sit at signals through three minutes. Well, you're going through the cycle. Well, there's pollution there, startup at that point in time. It's geared for certain traffic increments, and I understand. But instead of having a tripping switch, that's why I talked to the planning commission, I think, to jar. When we put signals in, let's put the computerizing. Sure, they're double the cost, but if you want to cut pollution, this is one way to move through. It goes through its normal cycle at business time. But if it's not business time, you sit for the normal cycle. So this is just that type of thing. The last point, maybe figure out how many businesses in this town have come in in the last five years? What are they? And how many drive-throughs do they have? And how many aren't drive-throughs? To say, what would we be cutting out of what we might have here? But as I say, I understand where you're coming from. I agree that we want to cut down on pollution. But I think a lot of people nowadays, from what I am seeing, a lot of us eyeing me. I want to go to the, take my kids to the ball field. We're going to stop and get something to eat, go. We may not go to the walk-in and grab it. I've tried to mention a while back the Hometown Buffet. If we were to create a drive-through because they have a wa- a big variety of food and there's a lot, maybe a lot healthier food there, what about a drive-through for the seniors? They may not want to walk, stand in line, carry a tray to a table. This is one out for a little more money to come in, tax revenue, and be able to get them something healthier. So I would suggest maybe some study, maybe go back and look at some of these issues and say, "What are the pros and the cons?" Thank you.
Next comment is from Mr. Stewart.
Thank you for your time. I'll just share a little information. I'd like to comment on the comments. Pros and cons, I think Stan did a great job on outlining generally a synopsis of the, it is a fairly complicated issue if you go through that. What I'd like to just share with you is just regarding the municipal code. We have a zoning code for the commercial, and it lists basically four sections, an A, B, C, and D, for the retail. And then there's another section for conditional uses. And there's a, there's a total of three under an A, B, and a C listed in the municipal code for that. One of those is be drive-up businesses, and it says, "Drive-up business," or, excuse me, "drive-in business." Except for drive-in theaters, each business shall be located in a lot having not less than ten thousand square feet. Minimum dimension shall be not less than one hundred feet of street frontage. There is no discussion with regards to land use. It is strictly provides for a drive-up business. So the current code provides for drive-up businesses by CUP. It does not speak to land use, whether it's a bank, whether it's a pharmacy, or whether it's a restaurant, and the many things in between. So to date, everything has been legislated on that, I think, probably since the city incorporated because much of this was the county municipal code that we adopted initially, and some of the businesses precede that. So that's pretty well. So if, if this is to be considered, it's going to take a pretty extensive look at that because you're, you're not just circling subset of the municipal code. This, you're going to have to pretty well tear apart the municipal code that I can see that everybody's been operating under. So I think it certainly has some pros and cons. I think, you know, with my application in, that we are proposing drive-up businesses, including financial institution as well as retail for a restaurant. So those are currently in the process. And if we're going to consider changes, we're going to have to look at it very, very carefully. Thank you.
I think what we should do is just ask for everybody to sum up where they are and decide if there's enough of an impetus to get staff to look into this.
Just on a final note, can't help but to read the two opposing brief, maybe somewhat extreme comments in the Canadian discussions. First one, "For Pete's sake, let's stop giving all the tree-hugging types ammunition they need to install more pedestrian-only zones, bike lanes, and heaven forbid, a tax on those who dare to use an automobile to get into our city." They're talking about some taxes, too. Then the other, the other side of the coin. "I'm a driver, a gearhead, and a coffee lover. And if I were the Minister of Environment for a day, there'd be a dollar service charge on every drive-through order. Money collected would be used to buy carbon credits to offset the pollution." So let's kind of sum up the extremes that are out there.
Which extreme are you at? Which extreme are you at?
I'll let you come to your own conclusion.
We'll just go, we'll go from the extreme on down. So go ahead.
Well, I have to say that I do appreciate the fact that you're taking the time to do this. I've had a little bit of experience of having to deal with passing ordinances that many people thought were unconstitutional and it would lead to problems. And it did lead to some issues, but ultimately they were resolved. And I can't help but think of Measure V. I remember when that was put forward, many lawyers said that it wouldn't stand scrutiny in the legal system, and it did. And the city was able to defend that thanks to some very good attorneys, but also just to the fact that the legislation was billed in a way in which it made it withstand legal muster. So at the same time, I introduced an ordinance banning lobbying for any elected official after two years after leaving office. And there was some concern then that that would be, you know, somehow an infringement on someone's right of free speech. But it was shown that it was done in other cities and it can be successfully put together without running into other problems. I understand where you're coming from. I'm personally open to the idea of looking more into it. My biggest concern has always been the legal portion of it. Sometimes we run into issues where we have good intentions and we may end up having more problems as a result. Or we think we're going to solve an issue and we find ourselves not solving it at all. So I would be in favor of having our staff and city attorney look into it. I still would like of more clarification as to how much leeway we have in banning these things. Is it truly across the board? Or can we tailor it to specific businesses? And whether that's actually legal, I think that's an important question for me. I'd also like to learn a little bit more about what happened in Baldwin Park. I'd like to have a real clear understanding as to how that ordinance was put together and what were some of the problems that resulted as a result. I've never heard a bit before, so I can't say for a fact that they haven't had legal issues or they're dealing with legal issues. I know that there was an effort prior to any of us being on the council. In fact, actually, you might have been here at the time with an attempt to prevent Carl's Jr. from coming in. And my limited knowledge is that, you know, the council made a compelling argument as to what their reasoning, apparently there was a lawsuit. And our attorneys stated that we didn't have enough legal grounds to really win. So ultimately, the council ended compromising. I'm concerned that we not lead ourselves in that path. So that's why, once again, I'm in favor of having staff and our legal counsel look into it and give us what options there are that would allow us to move this forward. If personally I'm not satisfied with those answers, then obviously I would not want to put the city in further jeopardy. But that would be my conclusion at this point.
My turn. I opposed marijuana dispensaries, packaged liquor outlets, public tobacco consumption, mainly because they have spillover effects on non-partakers of those substances. There are drunk drivers, there's second-hand smoke, there's second-hand marijuana. I don't personally believe that McDonald's has such spillover effects. And I'm struck by the comments of the author of the Blue Zone book. Sounds like he had a theory of why Loma Linda's a blue zone. And I think he got it partially right. There are a lot of vegetarians around. But I think what hit him in the face when he arrived and took the exit off the 10 freeway is that we're a blue zone despite fast-food joints. And that's because we have a community that makes wise, informed choices, not because we're a community that's shielded from bad choices. And I think it's important that we know the difference when we take up civic restrictions on businesses. I'm perfectly comfortable with keeping marijuana, alcohol, and tobacco as far from Loma Linda as we can get it. But I'm a little bit uncomfortable with starting to legislate vegetarianism, although I've been a vegetarian for 49-plus years. And I think that our children, there's a frequent argument that children don't need to have these choices available. Well, I think raising children includes, and one of the most important functions of parents is teaching them to make wise choices, given the panoply of bad choices. So I'm not terribly excited about this approach to redlining McDonald's or whatever else you want to say is out there. And I wouldn't support a whole lot more study, although if you don't spend any money, I guess I wouldn't have a big problem.
I think there's two primary comments that I would like to make regarding this. On the one hand, I concur with Councilman Breyer's vision of having Loma Linda be a unique city. I think we have some elements of that now. My vision would include other things that were discussed during the campaign as well, such as adding more trees so we have more tree-lined streets, bicycle paths, walkways with, in garden types of areas, unique retail stores and unique restaurants. I'm attracted to that, that in setting Loma Linda as a model of a unique environment that's focused on the future and then some of the clean air. Maybe I'm a tree hugger, I'm not sure. But I believe in some of the environmental issues that we need to be sensitized to as well as a special environment that's small-town America. The second comment that I would make is that I do have a concern about the fairness and the potential unfairness if we begin to try to change some of the current codes that we have. Just while there's a current development, as I understand it, in progress, working its way through the process. I'm not specifically familiar with just what's in there. I've heard it includes a McDonald's, and frankly, I don't know what other businesses it would include. But I think that it would be unfair to create a moving target if there are plans and agreements that are formulating currently. And I think that the least that we should be willing to do, should such a change occur, so that we did limit or legislate against any additional fast-food restaurants, that it would be incumbent upon the city to assist the developers in identifying and recruiting other businesses that would help help establish the development as an entity that would be successful, both for the developers, for the business owners, and for the city. And so the two issues that I'm concerned about is that we continue to seek ways to enhance the uniqueness of a small town like Loma Linda, a university and a hill-center town. But at the same time, I think we have to be sure that we do this in an open and fair way. And I do have some concerns about whether, about the timing on this.
Well, it's, I believe I'm probably the only other vegetarian on the council. Well, I don't, but I personally would never try to force my particular lifestyle on anyone else. And oftentimes, I envy you meat-eaters as I smell smells and see food on the Food Channel that looks very appetizing. But I was raised a certain way, and it's a lifestyle that I live now. That being said, I personally would never want someone to restrict my choices on what I was able to eat, when I chose to eat it. And I don't believe in that. So from a personal standpoint, I don't think it's right to regulate health or impose health on people. That's why God gave us the choices to make that we do. As far as the city goes, though, I would have questions, should this arise at our level, as to the aesthetic look of certain businesses and things like that. We do have a very clean, unique, beautiful town. And so those are the things that I'm concerned with. And I think we can make just about anything look right or look nice, so that may not be an issue. And then the other question I would have is what kind of impact they may have on services such as law enforcement and fire, whether or not certain businesses attract certain types of calls more than others. And that's maybe something that staff could look at if we decided to go that way. But personally, I really echo what the mayor said, except he said it very eloquently and a lot better, a lot more clearly than I am right now. But I was impressed with what he had to say, and I believe I feel the same way, so.
I guess I would like to comment on what's been said. I wouldn't view this, and don't think it was proposed, as a way to, a backhanded way to legislate vegetarianism. I see this as more of an aesthetic, kind of creating the character of a community is more of the issue in my view than what type of food happens to be sold at a drive-in or other types of restaurants.
I would agree with you on that. I do agree with Mayor Rigsby's assertion that if we're discussing the blue zone has less to do with our restaurants and more to do with the individual choices of individuals as to how they're going to lead their lives. I don't even want to argue that because I really think that that's a secondary issue. To me, the only reason I would even entertain this is I do think Loma Linda's unique. I do believe that people that came before us did not make wise choices. I believe the people rose up and changed them. I mean, if you all recall, the only reason I'm here is because a bunch of people wanted a bunch of apartments. And people stood up and said, no, we don't want all those apartments. And to this day, we're still fighting that, just in case you're wondering. So I think the community has a right to attempt to make itself unique. And this perhaps may be one way. And so therefore, I have no problem with entertaining that. For me, it has nothing to do with McDonald's or anything else. I truly, I agree with Dr. Daly about the fact that we want to try to attract the type of restaurants that we envy and we find ourselves having to drive to other cities. And sometimes it's frustrating that when there is an opportunity for a restaurant, somehow fast food becomes the only viable option. And I'm not saying you need to mandate laws to prevent that from happening. But we, as elected representatives, attempt to try to take into account personal preferences of our constituents. And even though majority may not necessarily feel that way, sometimes the minority, if they're outspoken and perhaps energized enough, sometimes are able to make changes. So I think we have an obligation to look at everyone's perspective and see what our options are. And I see no problem with looking forward to it. It may be that this may not even be a viable option. But I really would like to encourage the rest. I never quite tell from all of your statements as to whether you were comfortable enough with allowing our attorney to look into it.
Well, I was about to call for a head count because I count two that are not terribly excited about going forward with this, two that are somewhat excited about it, and one that's kind of in the middle.
No, not really. I, well, we can, you know, we've done before where one or two people give direction to staff to investigate something. So, you know, if the two are just... I'd like to see if, and this is Mr. Brower's issue, but I'm not comfortable with moving forward if there's just two of us. I really think that we need to have, I would think the staff needs to be comfortable enough to see a majority. But I'd like to hear your viewpoint, whether this issue becomes moot, that's not even looking...
Let me hit the beehive real quick with a stick. A month ago, we had, or so, we had quite a few people show up here to make public comments on this issue before we even knew it was an issue. I hear what you're saying about the community and the community's desire. And I believe that's very important because you're absolutely right about what's changed in this city in the last few years. But my question, is that truly the community? Because I'm not certain that most of those emails that I received, and I received quite a few of them, and most of the people that showed up here that night were actually residents of the city of Loma Linda. Those are the people that put us into office. Now, I understand we have a lot of people that work for the university. We have a lot of people that are in the healthcare industry that are in this city every day. But they're not the ones who live here. They're not the ones that benefit from the city services, so to speak, or that put people into office or have a will or desire. And that's the community that we serve. So again, not to create a bigger issue, but I would want to hear more from the community, from our actual residents, as to what direction they would want to go with something like this. My personal opinion, I'm with Dr. Rigsby. I'm not interested in legislating this. But again, we don't necessarily work for ourselves. But as it stands right now, I'm not interested in moving forward myself.
Let me be a little more clear, if I was vague. I would prefer that we're attracting higher-end restaurants and other types of businesses to Loma Linda. I support exploring to see what the potential impact or what information or data may be out there that would inform our ability to make a decision about this. The parallel issue for me, however, is the issue of fairness to current plans that are underway. I don't know where we are with those plans, how far they've evolved, what kind of agreements may or may not have been signed. I do have concern about the issue of fairness. But having said that, I would be supportive of exploring what kind of standards that we could build in to our codes that would encourage the kind of unique character and environment that I would have a vision for. And I believe there's a lot of other people that would share that.
I'm going to put you on the spot. Does that include actually looking into banning drive-throughs? Because I think you said you want to encourage certain businesses. But what we're discussing right now is staff looking into...
Sure, I'm supportive of pursuing, exploring that.
Okay.
Well, it looks like we have three.
I'm actually, I'm not changing my mind, but I go back to my statement. I do totally agree. I don't think we can legislate things. This is no intent to legislate anybody's code of conduct or eating habits or whatever. It's more a vision for the city. And until we have a clear, I think, consensus that it's the direction to go, I will join Councilman Duper and the mayor that one of the reasons I didn't choose to pursue or have staff spend a lot of time on this, I'm not sure we have a strong consensus on this. And I think our discussion reflects that. So I think for tonight, tent is simply to bring this to everyone's attention, to have a timely discussion, which we have had. But I think it would be a waste of time, based on the feedback that I'm hearing, to have staff spend a lot of time. There are costs involved, even though they may not be direct, of diverting staff. And believe me, I know they're overworked with multiple hats they're wearing. So until we have a... So, till we have, I think, a more clear consensus, I would not be in favor of spending a lot of time on this, and would like to either table this formally or informally, and say we've had a discussion, and that's where it stands at this point.
Just out of curiosity, you said you want a more clear direction. Do you feel like you need better direction from us as council members, or do you feel like you want the viewpoint of the community at large?
I think it's both. You know, I think there's enough mixed input that, again, I don't sense a groundswell from either council or community at this point to support the issue, and my intent was simply to have a discussion. We've had that, you know, maybe a month from now, maybe a year from now, maybe two years from now, maybe there, may not.
I appreciate you raising the issue. I hope that if it's not pursued, if this specific issue isn't pursued, I can accept that. But I do hope that we find opportunities to do more active visioning of what kind of planning we want in our community, if others share the fact that we would like this to be more unique. I mean, I have been around, I've been at many, many universities now, and there are some that are virtually surrounded by fast food outfits. I mean, it's a, and you have a medical center next door, and that's right territory for small retail businesses like that. That does not fit my vision of what I, how I would like to see Loma Linda evolve in the coming years. At the same time, I'm not just caught up on drive-through restaurants. I think I'm talking about a bigger, broader issue than that, that does need, in my mind, some kind of definition. So I hope if we abandon this particular issue tonight, that we find some other opportunity and way to pursue more specific visions of where we'd like to, what kind of businesses we want to attract, what kind of developments we want to support.
Yeah, and I think as a follow-up on that, again, since we've brought up the issue of Clermont, I think this is a long-term model and goal that hopefully Planning Commission and others can say, "Let's move forward to this tree-aligned, pedestrian-friendly neighborhood feel with healthy eating choices." Although Clermont has plenty of non-vegetarian options, so again, this isn't a vegetarian, non-vegetarian issue, but have those long-term goals and figure out ways to move toward that. Agree.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I could get some clarification, whether it's from the city manager, who, we have a planning commission, my, as I read their minutes or read their agenda, most of it appears to me to be reviewing project submissions and approving or not approving those, or making recommendations for improving the project. Councilman Brower's brought up an interesting point. Is it part of the charge to the planning commission to also do the kind of visioning for the future of the community that we're talking about?
Well, it sounds like you're talking about an adjustment to our general plan.
Actually, we're doing that as we speak. We're in the process of adopting a development code that's going through the planning commission, and eventually will make our way to us, and in that, it's a blueprint of basically the rules and regulations we would like to apply to future projects, and that's actually coming up in front of us. So, there's an opportunity for us to look further into vision and revise it as we see fit, of course, as long as it meets the legal criteria. So there's an opportunity for that.
And that's the kind of blueprint that I think developers are looking for. They don't like going out and enticing, to your fairness argument, enticing businesses to come and then have them slap back one at a time based on community reaction. I think it would be really nice for us to develop something that would be a nice model that everyone can say, "Okay, we can proceed with that without community opposition." Wouldn't that be an ideal?
Make sure we're all clear. It appears like, not to speak for you, but you have decided that at this point it's not worthwhile for staff to look too much more into it, but we just wanted to bring it up, get a feel for where we all stood and all that.
I think that's an accurate summary of my position.
Okay, then there's no action necessary. We had a nice discussion. I think Dick Wiley wanted to make one more comment on that, a closing statement of some sort.
Thank you, Dick Wiley. One comment that I think Dr. Daley jarred my memory. I gave to Conrad Bolwich an article in Consumer Report on basically drive-through restaurants, and this was a survey that was done, I guess, nationwide. Rated service, rated food, rated the whole group of things. And I believe it was about a month or two ago. And I was surprised, what you see over at Citrus Plaza now, and going in that area, sit down and stand up. Most of what is around here is the lower end of the scale. All the stuff that's at the top, now whether some of that's basically on the East Coast, it hasn't gotten out here yet, but that's a criteria to look at and say, "What do we want to attract? What is the good and the bad? How do we rate it?" So it might be something you might want to look online and check on it and give you some ideas to use for your idea.
I think unfortunately, I think we suffer from a larger reputation of being in the Inland Empire and part of the county and some other things like that. And I had some experience with a, there's a chain of noodle restaurants, mostly in other states east, but there's two of them here in California. There's one in San Diego and one up north on the coast, and it's kind of akin to, to... What's the burrito place? Chipotle. Looks just like Chipotle. You walk in and you get, you pick and order different noodle dishes, and, I mean, it's actually, I think, pretty healthy. And it was kind of a unique thing, and I thought, well, this, I thought this would go great in our town, because it's, it's not super high-end, but it's, and it's not quote-unquote "fast food," but it is kind of fast food, and if you look at any of these Chipotle restaurants, we missed, by the way, just to divert for a second, we missed the boat with Chipotle and Panera, because Redlands and San Bernardino have both of them. And if you ever drive by there at lunch, they're jam-packed with lines going out the door. But again, as was mentioned earlier, we had a counselor, a couple, council a couple of years ago that was more interested in putting up apartment complexes. So, we do have a new focus here, I think, and I think that is stuff that we are interested in, all of us. To go back to my original comment, I contacted the chain and the company back east, they're based out of Colorado, I believe. This was a few months ago that I did this. And I wrote them an email and talked about our community, and the response back was, "You don't fit our demographics." And that was hard for me to understand, because I don't think they understand our demographics, especially with some of the health groups that we have. We have bicyclists, we have the lopers, we have, we have the medical center, we've got the students, we've got people that would be, I think, into that kind of stuff. But I think oftentimes, business misread us or associate us with the greater area as a whole. Anyway, I guess my point is, is that we appreciate those type of things, and every single one of us here on the council has been looking and would love to do things like that. Those opportunities just haven't come quite to fruition yet, so.
Okay. Item 17 is League of Cities Annual Conference Resolutions Packet. Are we going to consider these resolutions one at a time, or do you want to give us a synopsis of your recommendations, or how do you want to do this?
Well, next month, on September 21st to 23rd, is the annual conference in San Francisco that I think at the last or previous meeting, you have select Councilman Duper to attend. And I would like for just you to give him the direction and just give him the opportunity to vote on this issue, and that's about it. I don't think we need to go through every single one of them.
I trust him to use his best judgment and vote as he sees fit after hearing discussions and so forth on these items, and personally don't have strong opinions on any particular item, and leave it to his discretion.
They seem fairly, I would say, what's the word, word? Common sense-type resolutions. I don't, I agree with Dr. Brower. I don't see anything here that's compelling, and I would, I have faith that he would use his best judgment, but so far, I'm supportive of these resolutions.
Yeah, I looked through them, and, you know, I don't, I'm not quite sure where the idea came to honor the city bell. I guess they're feeling pretty down, and they need some kind of support, but I'm also supportive of the prison rape elimination approach, because, you know, we've got an active district attorney, and he seems to have a lot of politicians in his sight, so just in case we ever fall victim to that, it'd be nice to have more safe prisons.
I don't even know how to approach this, because this recently entered into my professional career, and it's hard to explain how complicated that gets, because...
You know the system, so you know better than the rest, some of us.
Our inmates will take every, and I mean every, advantage to slow the system down, bog the system down, get whatever kind of money they can get out of any pocket they can reach into. And that might be best, I might just, probably should just keep my mouth shut at that point.
Mr. Duper, do you plan on attending the conference, as far as you know?
Yes.
Okay, so you've already made arrangements? Okay, thank you.
And then, and of course, I just have a comment on number five, the replacing the death penalty with the sentence of life imprisonment, when we currently have to reduce our prison population by 33,000, so obviously, what's a few more on death row, I guess, huh? I mean, I personally have strong feelings or opposition against that, so you know.
Yeah, other than, I agree with that one. That's one that is not terribly popular in this side of California.
But unfortunately, it's probably very popular to the north.
Yeah, well, it emanated from the city of Los Angeles, that resolution.
You can almost cut out Los Angeles and add them.
Yeah. Otherwise, I'm very strongly supportive of alternative methods of public notice requirements for a city, and I agree with the summation in the argument that, that nobody reads that section of the newspaper. It's fulfilling a legal requirement that's so anachronistic that it's almost useless. So, well, is that, have you received enough input? I think we can move to reports of councilmen.
Couple of quick updates. Some of you may know that there's a big battle going on regarding RDAs and the fact that the cities have filed a lawsuit, and we are joining in that lawsuit against the state for its implementation, the elimination of the RDAs. There was an effort made, starting this week, to start a referendum on it. The voters have the options, besides fighting something in court, but to actually overturn a measure simply by getting signatures and putting something on the ballot, and then trying to get people to vote for it, to basically invalidate what the legislature passed. The folks who started that process have decided to stop it, and their reasoning for that is because they feel that after looking at the legal challenges placed by the cities in their attempt to overturn this to a piece of legislation, they felt compelled that they should use their resources to help with that. So, it's kind of a good news, bad news, but it shows that there are folks out there who truly believe we have a pretty strong legal basis for hopefully overturning those. Just to summarize, basically, Governor Brown passed legislation to eliminate RDAs, and also in the same process, allow them to continue as long as we pay, and our city's going to be paying something to the tune of $3.2 million, or $2.8? I lose track. About $3 million, and basically, they're taking money from all the cities to the tune of about $1.7 billion. You know, everybody likes to be politically correct, but it's very simple. A lot of unions paid a lot of money to get them elected, and it's time to pay up, and they don't have the money, they don't want to cut salaries, they don't want to lay people off, so they're going to raid the cities. It's as simple as that. So, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. But anyway, the other, just a quick update on the airport. You might have seen recently some military helicopters, you'll probably be seeing a few more of those. The airport is now authorized to sell fuel to the military, so there, you, in the near future, you might see more military type of aircraft landing there. And the airport board did pass 16 recommendations that were put forward by the grand jury, and they were adopted, and we submitted it, and we're moving forward with making sure that the airport's running smoothly and attempting to attract a commercial airliner here. So I just wanted to update everyone on that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one quick comment. In the last couple of weeks, came across a restaurant chain I wasn't familiar with. I believe it's called Veggie Works. They have about a half dozen locations in LA and Orange County, and have some very creative vegetarian food that I would categorize as the dishes closer to something like the Greens Restaurant in San Francisco, but in a casual setting, not a health food environment. So anyway, I emailed the CEO and pointed out, we probably have, you know, over 10,000 vegetarian meals served in this community and food facilities on any given day, and would love to have a restaurant here, and he at least was kind enough to reply, and says he's very aware of the concentration of vegetarians in this area, and are constantly looking for new locations. So, kind of a non-committal, but at least, I'm going to actually go down their nearest facilities down Irvine Spectrum.
Is that the Veggie Grill?
Did I say Veggie Works? I think it is Veggie Grill. I misspoke.
I ate there three days ago, it was very good.
What was your impression?
Very good.
Yeah, I plan to go eat at the one at Irvine Spectrum sometime the next week, want to go down to the beach.
Their literature at their restaurant says that they have over 1,000 requests for locations, so. And they're, they don't franchise, they have six locations, and they're opening two per year.
For the, for the time being, enjoy dining in Orange County, LA County. We do not fit those demographics. Been in contact with them for several months.
As Councilman Duper pointed out, it's a continuous challenge, although I still think there are possible hope for unique businesses that realize there could be something unusual in the concentration of vegetarian opportunities, even though our demographics don't work otherwise.
I think you have mentioned this restaurant before, you've actually eaten in one, too. I should note that I've had...
We ate at the one in Mission Viejo. It's wonderful food, you'll enjoy yourself, good dining. Hopefully, we'll, if we keep pressing them, eventually they'll come out and visit our community and show a little interest.
I should point out that I have been approached by a resident of Loma Linda who's stated that he is seriously looking into opening a vegetarian restaurant, and he's actually looking for locations. So, I think there is an effort. We may not get a chain or someone, but it looks like there are, I mean, most, some businesses recognize that there's an opportunity here, some look for specific demographics, but if you look at the success, mind you, they're not vegetarian, but of Kukas and Mr. Kebab, soon after they opened, and even after that, they continue to remain fairly busy, and when talking to some of the owners, especially with Mr. Kebab, the amount of business they received was beyond their expectations. And this was a, you know, a restaurant that technically shouldn't fit our demographics, but yet is still doing well. Same with Starbucks. Starbucks is doing very, very well. So I think there's definitely opportunities for restaurants, we just have to educate those people who have the restaurants.
Okay, any reports of officers? Okay, any reports of officers? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I want to report that in the past, I report about the copper theft that we have in town. We still have three or four neighborhoods that's still in the dark, because we are in the process of getting a new wire and install, replace those. But the good note is, last Sunday, the sheriff just arrested a suspect for copper theft, so, so that's a good thing.
And do we know if he got the Loma Linda thief, or is this just a...
Has he confessed?
No, not yet.
I think they're doing investigation. But it said that the description of vehicle seemed in the area of the theft in Loma Linda, so might be the same one.
I think it's important also to let the community know that some of the streetlight challenges that we have had have been directly related to copper wire theft. It's not that we're not keeping the bulbs exchanged when they need to be changed out. And that's an ongoing problem.
So, Jarv, let me just get this straight. If at 3:00 in the morning, we see a pickup truck pulling wire out of the ground, that's not one of your employees?
No, and please call 911.
Got it.
Follow them to their hideout and call 911. Okay. Any other comments from officers? Okay, then the city council is adjourned.
If I, I have one question I'd like to direct to the sheriff representative, if possible. I've been, several people read about a drug bust that occurred in Loma Linda, was it last week?
Yes.
Okay. And there's concern about whether we've got neighborhood, other neighborhoods that have that kind of operation occurring, or if they were surprised that there would be such an activity going on in our city. And I've assured them we're part of a broader community, and so it can happen here just as easily.
Yes. And, and again, we, percentage-wise, we don't have as, as many, but we do, we have, we have our shares.
And we catch them.
Yes, and they're good deals.
Okay, good.
There's a comment.
So, sorry to bounce in again, Dick Wiley. Also, copper sprinklers are disappearing. So for the residents around here, if you've got them, you keep an eye on them, or get them replaced, so that you don't lose them.
Yeah, they're, they're brass, and there's not a whole lot of copper in those.
Well, they're, they're all disappearing, that's coming out, too.
Yeah, I wish we could, can we teach a metallurgy class, so that these thieves can target things that are actually worth something? I have a particular disdain for inefficient theft. I think, I think the prison term should be multiplied by the, by the quotient of how much it costs to replace the item divided by how much they got for it. So if it's a 50-to-one ratio, you get a 500-year term. Well deserved. Okay, the city council is adjourned. We move to the redevelopment agency to complete their agenda.
We called to order, actually, we are called to order. I guess we do give opportunity for any public participation. Seeing none, we move on. We've already addressed items number one, A, B, C, D, and E during the regular council meeting, so the only one item left is number two, which is the minutes.
Move the minutes.
And hearing the opposition, it so passes in less than a minute. Thank you.
Are we adjourned?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
The microphone's turned off, so it's over. So, did everybody get what they wanted?
We are solid.